All right. Hello, welcome everyone to the City Council Planning, Development and Environment Committee. My name is Victoria Hunt and I will be Chair of the Committee this evening. We will have a remote meeting and this meeting will be conducted in person and virtually in compliance with the Governor's proclamation related to the COVID-19 emergency and open public meetings. There will be multiple public comment opportunities at tonight's meeting. There is a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation and council question on tonight's agenda items. Members of the public may address council -- well, I also wanted to make sure to announce that Councilmember Ray, who is a regular member of this committee, has an excuse absence this evening, so it will be myself and Council President Walsh this evening. The first item on our agenda is public comments. And members of the public may address council at this time, in person or virtually. Those who are signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you are on the phone, press star three, or if you've joined by computer or smartphone, look for the hand icon. This varies by device. One option may be to go to the participant panel and choose the raise hand icon in the lower right-hand corner. And if you were in the room and did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers, but I'm not seeing anyone in the room at this time. So I will wait for a moment to see if anybody is wishing to make comments at this point? Yes? Okay. Then I will give some additional guidelines. Citizen comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions we make. Please direct comments to the whole council and not individuals, and while this is not a question and answer session, we will follow -- we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, please unmute your microphone or step up to the lectern. If you were in person, state your name, address, and relationship to the city. Please speak clearly and pause frequently, and please limit your comments to five minutes. If you are attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called, the meeting will need to proceed, and you are encouraged to rejoin if able. City Clerk, can you please identify the first person who has signed up to speak?
Yes, the first person who's indicated a desire to speak is Ann Fletcher. And I'll make you a panelist now. You should then have the option to unmute and can choose to turn your video on. Ann, you have the floor. Ann, in case you're having trouble unmuting, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you now so your mic is live.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. It would not unmute for some reason. Okay, and I'm not able to start my video either. It doesn't seem to start, so I'll just go ahead and talk then. All right, my name is Ann Fletcher, and I'm a resident of Issaquah, and I'm also a member of People for Climate Action. And I just want to say good evening to councilmembers Hunt and Walsh. And earlier this evening, I sent you and the entire council a letter of concern. It's signed by 36 community members who have some concerns about the scope and priorities of the current Title 18 revision process. Given the urgency of climate action and the related issues, the community would like to have a clear timeline of when more substantive work on Title 18 code is planned, work that will more fully support the implementation of the approved city plans to address climate and other areas of concern. This came to our attention most recently with the draft code of Title 18 being presented to boards and commissions. It appears that important work to meet goals in our comprehensive climate action and mobility plans is being postponed until further work can be done to prepare for the Title 18 code. And we would request that you reflect on your support for community priorities and consider further communication to the community about how and when Title 18 code will be prioritized and developed to move these approved plans forward in a timely way. We started circulating this petition yesterday, and we will continue to do so. Please review the attached letter that I sent in, and it includes samples from our current comprehensive plan and the Issaquah Climate Action Plan, and we believe there's already support there to make -- do additional Title 18 code revision, at the very least planning ahead about when it is going to be done so that we can meet our climate goals. And we would like some kind of response as soon as possible. Thank you for the chance to speak and on behalf of Issaquah People for Climate Action and the other community members that signed the petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Clerk, do we have anyone else signed up to speak?
Yes, I see that Connie Marsh would like to speak. And just a reminder for those -- the rest of the public on the virtual meeting, if you'd like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send me the host a chat message. Connie, I'll make you a panelist now.
Hi, I'm Connie Marsh, and I live up on Squawk. So I want to bounce off of Ann's comments a little bit. I just came out of an interesting public meeting on the next segment of code where this is an example. I was told that because the language says that we are supposed to make pedestrians safe in parking lots, that we didn't have support to put in implementation language to actually make pedestrians safe in parking lots, and that we would need a policy change. And so this left me entirely confused, not in unusual state, as to what we are considering policy support, because I see many things that are not being acted upon that I perceive to have policy supports. And I guess, I guess the community listening to Ann, we are confused with the pick and choose method of what needs more policy language and what does not, because if something says that we are supposed to make pedestrians safe, that seems to me like that is the policy that then would allow you to create implementation language. And so if council could request clarification so that we might better understand why things are being considered not supported by policy, that would be great, because I'm flummoxed. Thanks.
Thank you, Connie. Clerk Geezer, do we have anyone else signed up to speak?
Steve Boliger would like to make comments. Steve, I've made you a panelist. You should now have the option to unmute and can choose to turn your video on.
Hey, it worked. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm Steve Boliger. I live at 18724 Southeast 65th Place, Issaquah. I appreciate the opportunity to talk. I did send in written comments yesterday. Hopefully those have been received by the committee. I inflummoxed about where we are in this process and how we got here, and I think a lot of people are. I was hoping that after we passed the ICAP and got some additional language in the comp plan in December, that the whole land use revision process would recognize the importance of some of those -- that language and documents and would do a pivot. And I was very surprised and only learned through the process of making comments and getting staff responses of the limitation and the scope of this land use Title 18 revision process. I think it's unfair to call it a land use revision process when it's really a consolidation and clarification process, as best I can tell. And I think we're losing a great opportunity here, a really important opportunity that we can't miss. We can't keep kicking the can down the road. There are some really crucial nuggets, even if we stay within the existing framework of the code we have, which at this point I'm taking as a given. We're not going to be pivoting to any form-based code or anything different. But there are sections of that that really can make a dramatic difference in protecting our environment and lowering our emissions. And the land use code is such a valuable tool for the city to use to get us to some of our targets, and I just really hate to see us miss that opportunity. And we can zero in on those nuggets. We don't have to do a whole redo of everything, but look and ask yourselves, what are those areas in the land use code that exist now that we could change that will have the greatest impact to help us lower our carbon emissions? And we know it's in the building industry and in transportation. And we know that those two nexus come together when we deal with parking, and we've got to lower our vehicle miles traveled, their VMTs, and yet we keep having a code that has way too much parking in it for all kinds of uses. So anyway, I'm very frustrated at the guardrails that have been placed on this process, and I'm, you know, really disappointed that we are where we are. I still think we can add to this very robust outreach process and start tackling some fundamental changes in the code without just putting it on a whiteboard for future discussion, which is what's happening now. And it's possibly for everyone, including our environment. So, thank you.
Thank you for the comments, Steve. City Clerk, do we have additional people signed up to speak?
Chair, I don't see anyone else indicating a desire to speak, and I would ask if Ann Fletcher and Connie Marsh could lower their hands so that I can determine who'd like to speak at the next comment opportunity.
Okay, thank you very much. And we do not have anyone in person in the council chambers wishing to address us at this time. And thank you again to all of the community members who made comments this evening. The first item on our agenda will be approval of minutes, and this will be the minutes of our May 3, 2022, meeting and summary of input Title 18 landscape and open space review. These are informational items, and I do not believe that there will be a presentation on these or any comments, but we do have a request for a few changes, which I would like to state at this time, unless Director Dollywall, if you'd like to make any -- say anything before I go ahead and do that.
No, I don't have anything new to add.
Okay. Well, I will just go ahead and say thank you very much for putting this with our materials. I appreciate that we are tracking these conversations, especially for Title 18 in this way, because there's a lot of material that is going to come before this committee, and there will be changes made after our committee sees and has our -- sees the materials and has the discussion. And so having this, having this touch where we look at the minutes that were from the last meeting and have an opportunity to make any additions or corrections is really appreciated. And I thought the minutes were very thorough and reflected our conversation very well. So again, really appreciative. I did have two requests for changes, which have been already conveyed to Director Dollywall, and those were two things that I wanted to have captured in the minutes. One is that there was a request from the committee to consider an approach based on ecological score, like the neighboring city of Redmond, and this is again under Title 18 landscape and open space review from our last conversation on this. And then there was also a request from the committee to consider directly allowing for fire breaks around the home in the canopy cover requirements rather than trying to design a canopy percentage that would accommodate a fire break. So those were the two things that I wanted to ensure were captured in those minutes, and I'll check in with Council President Walsh if you had any additional comments on this item.
Nope, I think those are good additions.
All right. And City Clerk, do I need to make any sort of formal motion with that?
You could just say there being no objection, the minutes are approved with the corrections.
Great. There being no objection, the minutes are approved with the corrections, and we will then move on to ID 1139, Title 18 zoning and uses. Just want to make sure, yeah, we don't have public comments under the minutes. So we will move to ID 1139, Title 18 zoning and uses, and there will be a presentation now by Director Dollywall.
Good evening, councilmembers and members of the community that are watching. I'm going to share my screen here. So tonight, we're talking zoning and uses. This is the third bucket, so to speak, of the six major big topic groupings, and we're seeking input from the committee on these regulations, whether there are any additional considerations that PPC should study before they finalize their recommendation to City Council. So in other words, do the proposed changes meet the golden outcomes for this topic, or are there any additional topics that we need to take into consideration when we're doing the final edits? There are five total subgroups: zoning, permitted uses, specified uses, form and intensity, and subdivisions under this bigger zoning and uses category. And there are two goals that apply to these changes that we're proposing, we are presenting tonight. Goal eight, which is the neighborhoods retain their distinctive character and then modernize and streamline the code. There is an additional goal, number six, I believe, which talks about increasing housing diversity, and so we're studying that with the grant that we have from Department of Commerce to look at how to improve housing diversity, and that's not included in this topic that we're presenting tonight. In terms of process, we did the gaps analysis. Planning and Policy Commission and Development Commission had joint discussions based on their feedback and the members of the community that provided input during that process. We released the draft code. We held an open house, had a public hearing, and then PPC has deliberated, and there -- all that summary is included in your packet tonight. And we're here today with a Planning, Development, and Environment Committee discussion based on all of the feedback. We'll come back to -- we'll go back to the Planning and Policy Commission with a hearing in October and final council action in November, December. What's in your packet, as in the previous topic, we have summary of proposed changes, links to the Planning and Policy Commission, the meeting minutes, public feedback loop, and also the draft code. So zoning, what are the -- you know, under the zones chapter, we talk about what's the purpose of each zone. The entire city has designated zones. We haven't changed any of them except for removed ones that no longer exist but were -- did exist at some point and are redundant and leftover. Based on that, for each zone, there's a permitted uses section, basically saying what uses are allowed in what zones. The form and intensity section really talks about how tall the building can be, how close it can be to the street, and how dense. And then we have the section called specified use standards that's really specific uses that are called out through the legislative process in the city over the number of years where it was an issue. For instance, the storage facilities had special design considerations that were incorporated. So if there is a specific use that was of concern in the past, we've carried that forward in this new section. And in essence, that's, you know, five different locations. Right now, the zoning districts, the standards are split, and it becomes difficult to administer, difficult for applicants to figure out, for the community members to know where to go. So this will consolidate all of this into one chapter. And, you know, this is more an explanation of how these tables are set up. So you have your zones on the top. They're broken down into categories, you know, residential, commercial, mixed use, and so on and so forth. And you have your uses on the left-hand side. So if you know your zone and you want to go and look at what is permitted on my property, you can look at your zone and then carry that to the permitted uses section on your left. Or if you're trying to build an adult family home, for instance, in the city, and you want to know which zones allow it, you find your use that you're interested in bringing to Issaquah, and then you look at the different zones that it's permitted in. So that's how the tables are set up. Some of the examples of specified uses, you know, that are called out are senior housing, shopping center, bed and breakfast, self-storage, cannabis, and outdoor recreation. So there are some specific things for these that are included in this chapter. I talked about this example where self-storage, we talk about location, access, colors, building design, roof line. We've carried that forward in this draft. Form and intensity is really about setbacks and bulk and impervious surface and height, density and floor area ratio, minimum lot sizes if they apply, and lot width. So that's all consolidated in this one chapter for all the different zones. Example, in a single-family small lot, your density is 7.26 dwelling units per acre. You have a minimum lot size of 6,000. There is no build-to line. There's a 10-foot setback, side setback, rear setback, 50% impervious surface, building height 30 feet, and so on and so forth. In a commercial mixed-use central Issaquah, kind of the same format, but there is no minimum lot size. There is no minimum, you know, front setback. There's more of a build-to line, so you can locate your building from 0 to 10 feet. There is a maximum impervious surface. There's also a base height and a maximum building height. So if you have some incentives, like affordable housing or -- and others, you can go -- you can build an 85-foot-tall building. So all of those are now put together in one, you know, none of these have changed other than, and for instance, in you -- you know, in the urban villages, there was no build-to setback line, so we chose a less stringent regulation to make it consistent. But those are minor edits and for consistency purposes, but nothing substantive in terms of form and intensity has changed. Some highlights for zoning chapter, no, you know, we've -- didn't change the descriptions, but when the replacement regulations were done for urban villages, there wasn't a description for the zone, so we've added those. And we have added, whoops, some clarity on allowed uses in each zone. There was a retail zone that existed only in paper, but there was no mapped zone, so that's been removed. So thing, you know, really housekeeping, kind of clean up things there. There was a laundry list of footnotes for permitted uses and such. Those are now gone, found a home where there aren't just all a mishmash of different uses. Animal regulations, we've referenced the King County and State regulations because they are more robust and they were consistent with our regulations, but they provide more guidance. Permitted uses, there were four different use tables. They're now in one location. They also had a level of review. So in one, so Issaquah Municipal Code had level of review, but not the central Issaquah, and which really was, I'll give you an example. So if it's a daycare that's a permitted use, you would go to this table, and it would have a level of review of two or three, or whatever the level of review was, but it didn't take into consideration the size and scale of that use. So a small, you know, 1,000-square-foot building would be the same review requirements as you would get a 10,000-square-foot. So we'll be talking about the thresholds and reviews in a separate section, but for now, this table is a very clear whether the use is permitted or not permitted. And we haven't removed any uses, but we, except for bike stations and emission testing and because those no longer are relevant anymore. And there used to be a long list of different types of retail uses called out separately that have organically grown over the years. Those are captured under a broader category of retail rather than listing each individual category. Again, moving the footnotes to appropriate places. Specified uses have been categorized into four, you know, residential, commercial, mixed, industrial, and institution -- and open spaces. Again, the focus is, you know, not being redundant, removing duplicate stuff, and really getting rid of vague and arbitrary language and trying to be more specific. We're not done there. This was our first attempt. We're going to continue to edit the language to make it more clear. We've also moved some of the temporary and accessory uses, like food trucks and those kind of things, into a separate section that we will release later. So that's, those are some of the highlights there. Form and intensity, we talked about. We've added, and you know, one thing that we should probably mention here is a significant amount of time was spent on which is the setback and where are my setbacks? Is this the front? Is this the right? And a lot of inquiries on that topic. So we've added graphics to kind of address that issue. We've removed the administrative adjustment of standards criteria that was really vague, and we could never give any predictable answers to people, which was your setback? And you had people had to go through a process. The neighbors were notified, and if anyone complained, then we couldn't really issue a decision. So all of that has been removed and clarified here. Again, the summary of comments that we received on zoning and uses were, you know, and this is from the commissions and community members combined. The details of all the comments were in your minutes and the matrices that we've included in the agenda packets with the PPC. But in essence, you know, commissioners felt that the permitted use table was effective in organizing and communicating. They had some suggestions to adding a key to the zones and adding some cross-references and hyperlinks, so we'll incorporate those. UV, commercial, retail, we received some public comments on that, asking to allow multifamily in that zone and ensuring that we were carrying forward some of the uses that were previously allowed, such as daycare, dry cleaners, park and ride, and then asking that we do allow outdoor recreation uses that are not currently allowed in that zone. Lakeside Industries has been engaged with this process as well, and based on their information, we realized that the maps that we have need some fixing. There was some legislative work done in 2015 that hadn't carried forward into some of the maps that we had online. Basically, the zones that were zoned mineral were not -- were changed to intensive commercial. So we're going to fix the map and maintain the existing permitted uses. The comments from Planning and Policy Commissioners and Development Commission were to limit the mining uses. So we'll look at how to keep the lakeside not from becoming non-conforming, but not allowing any new ones, so we'll fix the language on that. There was also some language in the code related to automobile service stations and intensive convenience stores should not be located within 300 feet of daycare and schools, but it was only in one of the documents. So we've carried this forward and made it citywide, but one of the comments from the commissioners was we should probably look at other uses that either the state law prohibits around daycares and schools and, you know, make it more comprehensive. So we'll look at that. There were comments related to non-conforming uses. That will be addressed in a separate chapter. And evidently, private facilities and public parks is an issue that has And evidently, private facilities and public parks is an issue that has come in front of cities in the past. And there, it was not fixed in this code update. So we'll look at how we can provide some clarity on, yes, they're allowed, and if they're allowed, what standards apply to them. So we'll work with the Parks Department and, and others to, to incorporate some of the changes related to that. Like I mentioned, some of the temporary uses, taco trucks and stuff, will be addressed in a separate chapter. There were comments about self-stored facilities that we really need to limit them where they're allowed. So they, they are allowed in a number of zones. They were limited in some zones during the central Issaquah update, but they continue to be allowed in, on a number of other zones. There are existing facilities in those zones, so if we take them out, they will become non-conforming. So we do want to have some kind of an outreach if that's needed. But there was a comment about if that's not necessary, perhaps a standard, or can be done with this update, perhaps a standard added to require ground floor retail to activate the front, the ground floor for self-storage facilities. Then there was a comment about allowing cafes and other similar kind of uses in residential areas in the spirit of making walkable neighborhoods. So that's the summary on that, on zoning and uses. So summary of comments on form and intensity were to clarify the definition of floor area ratio and how it's calculated. We'll be looking at that in the second draft. There were some comments related to the size of accessory dwelling in it, some desire to allow tiny houses as ADU. You know, since the city did the work on updating the ADU regulations not too long ago, we did not make any changes to the minimum size or the maximum size of ADUs. And there is one community member who is very engaged and wants to address how setbacks are calculated when you have a private dead-end road and you have a property that faces the lake. There's a unique situation of how the, the setbacks are determined in that situation. So we'll look at if the proposed changes addresses issue or if, what new additional changes are needed. So some general comments that you've heard tonight and that were also submitted were climate action plan should guide the land use code update. It absolutely is guiding the land use code update. You know, there was a lot of focus on the critical area code update and the tree canopy coverage that's already incorporated in the code. The, the city's land use code currently has, you know, some premises for targeting growth in central Issaquah and all those kind of things and making it a more walkable, sustainable community. We, and in this upcoming building design, we have incorporated some built design and LEED certification kind of things, but not in the zoning and uses section. And because the, the, the changing the entitlements and the zoning and what the uses are allowed are, were not within the scope of this Title 18 update. However, we will present what is being captured under the climate action plan and capture it in a document and put it for the planning and policy commission to look at, review, and for public to comment on. So we're clearly want to be open and transparent of what we've done related to that and what additional information we can provide, to provide that information. I think there were also comments that you, that we should not make no, any larger policy changes as part of this update to the zoning and uses section. There were some comments about improving readability and remove redundant language, which we absolutely plan to do and also test the code, which we are planning to do. Again, this is in your slide packet, but to address all of these comments.
Director, Director Dollywall, can I, can I, I think that last slide is a good place to pause. And I wonder if you could, just to take a step back, because we did receive comments about the scope of the update earlier this evening. We also received a number of email comments on the scope and here and in our emails, we do have both the opinion, you know, to, to have no larger policy changes as well as to go further and have additional changes than what's represented. So I wondered if you could, from, from your perspective, give a, like, take a step back and give an, an overview of what is in scope and what the goals are for this update? So for those watching, we can kind of get on the same page about that.
Sure, sure. So for this particular zoning and uses section, so you know, the six bigger issues, we are going further in a lot of places to address climate action plan, to address comp plan. But for the zoning and uses section, you know, a lot of work was done with the, with the public outreach and central Issaquah plan. And so we can't take all of that and, and change that up with this larger scale of an update. One, because these regulations are split in five different documents. If we start not only doing the consolidation, but also changing, the legislative record becomes extremely complicated to kind of figure out what happened and where it happened. So this sets the framework for future conversations about what should occur or shouldn't occur as far as zoning and uses go. If there are things in uses that need cleanup, absolutely. If there are uses that don't comply with a comprehensive plan, adopted policies, we can look at those. But, but we can't take, you know, a major change and take all that work that was done over the number of years and incorporate it with this code update related to zoning and uses. So what has guided this section of the update is the more of a cleanup, housekeeping, consolidation. There is one section, which we'll get to, the subdivision, which had a more of a policy discussion about it. So that, that's where the focus on this particular bucket. But, but we shouldn't forget that there are six other topics that we've made significant improvements and changes related to climate action plan. But for this particular, these four chapters, the focus has not been to allow taller buildings in residential. I mean, it won't fit in with the comprehensive plan too. So for instance, if we took a 60-foot tall building and put it in a residential, that won't be supported by existing policies and that would be, you know, not allowed under the state law. Our, our regulations have to be consistent with the policies. That's an extreme example. That's not what we're looking for, so.
Okay. Thank you. And would you like to follow up?
Yeah. So I appreciate what you're saying about no larger policy changes as related to these four chapters. I think there's still this larger question out there in regards to all of Title 18 of how did these guardrails come into place? Where, who set them? And, you know, wheth, whether there is the ability to change that. I, I appreciate the concept of wanting a legislative record of how the changes were made. I wonder whether having a draft version and then making changes from there, which shows then, this is where it was in the previous code, here's how we consolidated, and here's how we moved it forward according to community values. How, why is that not an option?
I guess we should figure out what is it that's not in here that's not aligned with the community's values, right? So what is it that, that we need to incorporate that is missing from zoning and uses perspective? And that isn't supported by the policies? That information hasn't come forth at this point. I think, you know, there, there's a lot in, in this section that is supported that, by the policies that, that meets some of the sustainability goals. And, you know, target, having taller, larger buildings closer to transit in, in the urban center. And so there's a lot of that information that's already pushing the city towards those goals. So it's not, you know, to, to answer if we, you know, it's not just the legislative record, but it's also what is it that's not there that, that's missing? Other than, you know, we've had discussions about process that, and, and a perception that it's missing, but I'm not sure I fully understand what is missing from the zoning and uses that is not aligned with the community's values.
I mean, I guess I would say, looking, you've done a fantastic job creating this goals and outcomes and feedback loop document. But what I'm seeing here over and over again is that's not within the scope, that goes on the whiteboard, things like that. I don't know how that decision was made and why we're at a point of telling the community over and over again, that's not going to be handled now without a clear understanding of what that process is going to be and why.
Sure.
That was, that went on to the whiteboard whereas the subdivision didn't.
Yeah. So the subdivision was listed under the goals and outcomes chart that, you know, the community worked on, the council worked on, and, you know, back in 2020, that, that sort of has guided the, the, the update. The other thing, I think, in the beginning, we kind of set the framework of what is, what is the framework of these, these changes? So it was whether it's in compliance with the state law, whether it's compliance with the adopted policies, climate action plan being one of them, and, and the goals and outcomes chart. So there are multiple things that have guided this, this work. In terms of the zoning and uses section, you know, some of the things we heard that we have put on the whiteboard are you want commercial uses in your residential zones? In order to do that in a single-family neighborhood, if you want to allow, it needs to be a thoughtfully, careful, you know, community outreach. You want to probably have a conversation with the, with the, the people in that community, whether they want it, whether they don't want it, where do they want it, what are some bookends? So all of that, I think, is, is going to be needed for something like a retail store in the middle of a residential neighborhood. If, if that's what is needed, it will, but, but we also need to understand if the market will support it or not. So those conversations at the neighborhood level will need to occur for those kind of changes to, to happen with Title 18.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just to amplify a little bit of Director Dollywall's comments, we came to the council last summer with, I think, an approach that we can call guardrails, we can call whatever you like, but the approach of which we're, we're currently underway. We believe, the administration believes, the code is in such significant need of revision that our recommendation at the time last summer, and as we've continued forward, is to stay that course. As Director Dollywall has said, there have been some issues with the climate action plan, which was adopted last fall, that we've been able to take into account. We will take more into account. But we came to you last summer, I think, with the simple idea that we need to get this code in a place that we're comfortable with as soon as possible. It's not there today. And so if someone were to come to the planning counter with an application, none of this would apply. Only what is currently on the books would apply. So we're committed to see this process through the end of the year, likely into first quarter of next year. And as we begin the budget discussions for 2324, I think it's very appropriate for the council to say, how much additional planning dollars do you want to spend? I mean, we are hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars into this revision, which is perfectly fine, and we will, we will happy to do that. The next set of revisions will be the same amount of dollars. We'll have to continue to look at existing city staff to support this as well. All things that we're happy to do, but we do firmly believe that the path we're down, which the council reviewed and approved last summer, is the path we need to continue on.
Thank you. And I, I will clarify that one of the reasons why I thought asking these questions on this slide in particular is because we are getting questions from community members that are broader than the chapters that we're reviewing. And so I wanted to give Director Dollywall and city administrator opportunity to provide from their perspective why the process is going the way it is. But yes, I think for both of us on the council, we're familiar with those, those documents. So wanted to also just take a step back and provide that information for, for those who are following this process. And so I think we can move on at this time, and we probably have some discussion, but we can save that for the discussion time on this topic. So please proceed. Thank you.
Sure. So I think we, we talked about what, I kind of captured that. So the last topic was subdivision. I included some slides. I'm not going to spend too much time over this, but basically just for clarity on what is a subdivision? And, you know, when we went to Planning and Policy Commission way back when, when we first started, that we, there were questions about what is this and how does this work and all that? And we gave some examples of, you know, what it means on the ground in, in Issaquah. So it's basically lay off your land. This is what shapes the city for hundreds of years because those lot lines stay and your pattern and development really is, is what shapes the city for a long period of time. And so I'll skip over this. Right now, our process is more than four new lots is considered a subdivision. We posed the question, the state law was changed a number of years ago. A lot of our peer cities have a nine-lot short plat threshold, whether we should consider that? And we got approval from PPC and, and Development Commission that yes, they concurred with increasing that threshold. The preliminary plat is the one that, you know, more than four lots, and in this case would be more than nine lots, is really when you're looking at, are there adequate provisions for open space, drainage, you know, parks, sidewalks, and the public interest is served? So a lot of work happens at the preliminary plat stage. It's a public hearing process. And then they go in and, and do, get a construction permit, build all their infrastructure, road, utilities, and then they come back for a final plat approval. And at that time, you know, it's a final check to make sure every condition was met and every, it passed all the inspections. And at that point, it becomes separate lots and they can get building permits for individual homes to be built. The short plat, the same kind of process, but it's all administrative. There can be public notice, part of the short plats. Here's another example of short plat in the city, which was a four-lot short plat. So generally for these, you'll see sort of what's called like a hammerhead type of a road, and that's basically to accommodate fire truck turnarounds. Here's another, the, the same one, a little blown up version. So it sets up as a private tract road that serves four homes in that neighborhood. Some examples I included in your slides of actual subdivisions that are under construction on Talis, Mallard Point, and West Ridge. So I won't go over these. Kilkari Phase Two has been built. Number Three, Phase Three is under review. So the reason why this one had a little bit more of a different take than those other four chapters was because its Goal 13 listed issues as, that the subdivision standards hadn't been updated since 20 years. They were more auto-centric and we needed to incorporate some basic design features that were important to the city. So we attempted to have a subdivision design chapter. We're soliciting comments on that. It is no way set in stone. We got some good comments from community members on it in terms of, you know, what's desired as for a street connections and having a 250-foot maximum block length probably doesn't make a whole lot of sense everywhere, citywide. So we've ratcheted it that down. We've added some zero lot line where you can shift your house on one side so you get, instead of two five-foot small setbacks, you get an actually usable 10-foot, 10-foot setback. So it's more efficient use of land, also encouraging shared access and alley access. So we've included some sections in there. There are some that are more should and may kind of, you know, encourage and discourage type of language. So for those, we'll move that into an intent section and, and create some more regulatory language. But if you have feedback on what a good, well-designed subdivision in Issaquah looks like, feels like, we'll make sure that we, that regulatory language should, is incorporated. I think the key changes, like I said, we added a design standard. Unit lot subdivision didn't exist in the, in the city and, and Master Builders Association asked for it, and it's a process. it's a process used in a handful of other cities, and, and really fosters more fee ownership type of lots. So as a townhome, people can actually own a fee ownership as opposed to a condo ownership. So we've incorporated that. We've really been very clear with the criteria for approval, it wasn't very clear for different types, so we've added that. There wasn't a process for lot consolidations. We did hear a lot of comments on this topic, which were more related to unintended consequences of lot consolidations, that people could consolidate and build a McMansion, and that would ruin the, the character of the neighborhood. So we'll look at what bookends we can put in terms of criteria for lot consolidation related to addressing that concern. We also didn't have an expiration, you know, it was an unlimited approvals could be granted forever on one-year increments, so we've, you know, added a maximum of three extensions with the idea that, you know, you get your preliminary plat approval, the state law gives you five years to build your infrastructure, and then you have to get your final approval, but we can extend it three years for legitimate reasons, but no more than eight years, you have to finish up, otherwise you need to meet, comply with the new rules, which is new critical areas, new stormwater, and all that. So, so there is some accountability for development is being built up to current codes and standards that are in place. We really made it clear that the deferred improvements and bonding is only for final overlay of the road, but you, but not that you go through a preliminary plat, you bond everything, and you can start building your homes, that, that all that infrastructure needs to be built in place before you can get your final plat. There wasn't a modification process, so we've added that and, and added specific criteria for it, we'll go back and look at it to make sure it complies with the state law and all that. There wasn't a provision for phasing, because some, sometimes these, you know, subdivisions occur in phases, so we want to make sure that we have a process and, and criteria for that. And finally, the state law was changed where the final plats can be an administrative decision, so we've, you know, we'll be making that change in the procedures section. So that pretty much is a highlight of the key changes.
Can I ask one question on that last one?
Yeah.
From the minutes, I was not clear on lot, I, I thought that we had lot consolidation as an option currently, and, okay, so you, but it's listed here as key changes, so...
Yeah, we did not, it didn't, you know, the code doesn't talk about lot consolidations, but it's the state law, if someone has two...
But it's allowed, right.
Yeah, we have to approve it, it just, we've approved them in the past, there wasn't listed in our IMC. So we, yeah.
So the, but the, but the, there's not a change in practice from prior, thanks.
Yep. So we asked some policy questions on this topic from PPC, basically on the design standards, you know, do we, do you think the block length makes sense citywide? What are some well-designed subdivisions? And anything they want to change on zero lot lines, alley access, or shared access? Open space and recreation standards, what, should they be the same for multifamily, single-family? So this is one area where we think we need to bring back some more research back for Planning and Policy Commission, because right now, there is no open space standard for plating. There is one for multifamily. We'll come back with some policy options and pros and cons, but we do believe there should be standards for multifamily, separate from subdivision, and there should be a minimum threshold based on how many lots you're, you're building. And then we asked them about the four versus nine-lot short plat. And the summary of comments that we heard were the block length of 250 feet, alley access and zero lot line should not be applied citywide. And Planning Policy Commission and Development Commission agreed with the public comments on this topic, and we concur that perhaps that's not the, the right one-size-fits-all. And lot consolidations, like I said, there were comments about being detrimental, unintended There were some who advocated for more public notice and, and process for short plats. Open space standards should be based on lot sizes and number of residences. And, like I said, we'll do more research on, on open space standards and come back, and we'll change the block length and such, and to central, Issaquah Highlands and Talis only and not citywide. That pretty much concludes, so the next steps, you know, we've heard loud and clear that we need to spend more time testing the code, so we intend to do that in September, July, August, you know, we're figuring out the dates for those, but we'll have a public hearing under our current schedule in October with Planning and Policy Commission and a consolidated draft, and we'll come back to the committee in November, December for your consideration. And next July, we'll be back with the building and design topic to, to you guys. So again, direction needed, do these meet the entire goal, you know, the, the goals for this update? Are there anything else we need to consider before making final edits? And that concludes my presentation.
Great, thank you. One, one more hopefully quick question. On the last part with the 250-foot blocks and the zero lot line, the 250-foot blocks, you could build that, it's, but it, you're, but the recommendation was to not require it, but it could still be built anywhere in the city, right?
It could be, yeah, it could be encouraged, but it couldn't, it won't be a requirement.
Yeah, and then the, and then the zero lot line is different because you can't, under the proposed changes, you couldn't build the zero lot line form in certain neighborhoods under the proposed changes, proposed code.
Under the, yeah, we didn't change where those, yeah, we were saying those are encouraged everywhere in the proposed draft.
Oh, so they could be built anywhere in the city?
Well, in the proposed draft, but we, that can change, you know, based on, I, I think we'll go back and look at, I think zero lot lines are referenced, we want to make sure the definition is correct, but there are sections of zero lot line, not necessarily in the subdivision chapter, but sort of sprinkled, when you do a word search, it does pop up once in a while in different places. So we want to make sure that we, if there was any legislative intent in the past of, of only allowing zero lot lines somewhere, we will carry that forward. But based on the public comments on the proposed draft are, where we are at today, and, and getting feedback from you all, is should the zero lot lines be also similar to the 250-block, only, only allowed in the three neighborhoods and not anywhere else? Or should it be allowed everywhere, citywide? I, I think we heard that there was some concern with allowing these more, you know, these are typically things that happen where the lot sizes are small, the land is more, you know, the, there's more denser type of single-family development. So the, from a builder's standpoint, that's probably where they'll want to put them. Generally, you know, if you have a 7,000-square-foot lot, most builders are not going to want to do a zero lot line, they'll just put it, a regular single-family home. So mostly, market will dictate these also on smaller lots, where the zoning allows smaller lots, that's encouraged, but we'll take a look at if the existing code references zero lot lines, if so, which zones. But based on the feedback on the proposed draft, where we're at today is that we would do it similar to those three neighborhoods would allow zero lot lines. Or we can allow them everywhere, but not require them everywhere.
Right, it's, it's all of those options that I was curious about, because we don't have the final version of the code that incorporates those changes, so I wasn't totally clear on what the proposed code, you know, whether it's required in those neighborhoods and then allowed elsewhere, or encouraged elsewhere, or required everywhere, I mean, there's all of those permutations, so that was, that was the question. But I think, I think I got it enough to comment on it anyway, so thank you. Do you have any questions at this point?
Are we at the end for kind of all of our questions?
I believe we are, yes.
Yes. So I had a question regarding hotel zoning and emergency shelters, I know that was something that we had to do earlier on, was either allow or not allow, where does that stand in this code?
Yeah, so that came from House Bill 1220, and part of the House Bill 1220, there were other things that we have to do with the comprehensive plan update. So, you know, that was one of the components that we had kind of, at one point, thought that we would put that under this code update. However, as we got into it, I think we pulled it off this update because we wouldn't want to have a more robust outreach to the hotel owners and others, and have a more targeted discussion more globally on the House Bill 1220, and that'll happen as part of the comp plan update, and then the regulations will inform. In the interim, if emergency shelters need to go, they would be allowed anywhere in the, I mean, that's just state law, we would have to allow them anywhere the, the hotels are allowed, yeah.
Okay, that was what I was looking for. Okay, when I was looking over the zoning charts, I got kind of confused with the urban village, single-family. The description of it early on before the area of the charts says that it allows attached townhouses, but I didn't see anything for attached townhouses down in the chart. Is that what's considered attached single-family homes or duplexes?
You know, I'm going to call, phone a friend, Valerie says yes.
So attached townhouses is attached single-family houses, and that is shown in the chart, if I remember correctly. So with that idea, can you explain to me the difference between a, an attached townhouse or attached single-family home and a duplex?
Good question, attached, uh, single-family home could be a duplex if it is only two units. Attached townhome could be six townhomes in a row. So the duplex is really, it's two in, in one building form, not more.
So what I'm trying to get down to understanding is, in the urban village, single-family, if it allows townhomes, why does it disallow duplex, triplex, and quadplex? Is there a substantial difference between those? Does it have to do with how many homes are on a particular parcel, and the parcel is segmented out for one of them and not the other? Help me.
Good question, you know, I, I don't know the answer to that. Valerie, do you, do you have an answer, or can you explain?
Uh, no, I think that's something that we're going to need to look into, I think previously, we've been really relying on definitions, and so I think we just need to make sure that everything corresponds and that it makes sense.
Yeah, I, I hear you, though, I mean, if you allow townhomes, why do you disallow duplex? Doesn't seem right, so we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, from my perspective, looking at it as an urban village, single-family, we've got a lot of areas in the Escou Highlands that have single-family homes right next to what, in my mind, looks like a duplex. And then we have other areas that are more like row houses that are townhouses that are, again, right next to or across the street from single-family or duplexes. So it seems in my mind that any of those things should be allowed in the urban family, single, urban village, single-family, because that's what's already there.
Sure.
But I'm trying to get an understanding of that.
Yeah, we'll take a look, and, and I agree with you that if, if they're already there for one, and two, there isn't much difference in terms of an impact, why are we trying to, you know, separate those out? So we'll...
Yeah, okay. And then along those same lines with the multifamily medium, I believe that was the one that allows duplex, triplex, quadplex, but doesn't allow what is in the chart as single-family attached. And so again, just trying to understand the difference between those and what the intention is for each of those zones as far as what's, what if it looks the same should be allowed or not allowed?
Yeah, yeah, no, I hear you.
Okay, so those were my two main questions, I have a ton of comments, but that's later.
Okay, I think at this time, I, I too have comments, but no further questions at this point, so at this time, we will go to public comment, and this will be an opportunity to comment specifically on this item. Clerk Gieser, is there anyone wishing to make public comment on this item?
Chair, let's, I am seeing at least one hand pop up, so just a reminder for our virtual attendees to raise your virtual hand if you'd like to comment or send me the host a chat. So far, I see that Connie Marsh would like to make comments. Let me, Connie, you are now a panelist.
Okay, hi, Connie Marsh. I think Minnie did a very good job of transferring most of the, the public comment and indicating that most of it would be addressed. So I am going to try to fill in the gaps of the comments that I made that I didn't think were addressed. And so one of my comments was, I found this, the way it's formatted right now, I was unable to understand why there were standards in this area when I just reviewed a whole nether chapter with standards. It seems unwieldy to have standards in two different areas, and maybe doesn't make sense. So I have difficulty with the hierarchy of language, because to me, zoning is super large and should be overarching, and I, I sort of resist putting small details in zoning and land use language. So it didn't make sense to me. Now, they say that they are going to provide links to provide pathways for people to be able to bounce from place to place, so I would ask for those links to be populated in the final draft, because maybe I can be persuaded that this is a reasonable format, but I just can't see it because I can't connect the dots. So there is, there is one. Two, is I looked at three, only three different pathways in this land use code, and all three did not work. And one was a taco cart, the other one was the public, uh, use of, I mean, private use of a public park, and I was using the tennis court, the tennis club example that we tried to do in the past, you guys probably weren't, not here. And then the last one was a doggy daycare, which I have next door to me, so I wanted to understand what that would be, because that is obviously a currently conforming use, but it looks like that is going to turn into a non-conforming use. And when I talked to my next-door neighbor, said, she said, well, shouldn't be, somebody be telling me it's becoming non-conforming, instead of me the loudmouth. And so I am wondering if there's a public process for telling people if there's formerly conforming zoning is going to become non-conforming, so that they can understand that that is happening, and they can understand what that means, and they can make appropriate comment. Lakeside did it, but they have their own attorney, there are probably other places where people just have no idea, and they're going to be surprised, which I don't think is appropriate. And Minnie did say that we're going to talk to the Parks Department about that use, and then we're going to do another section on taco carts. But those were my only three. So that gives me concerns, because I chose those at random, that this is not tested well enough to see what uses actually need more action. And I don't know what kind of rigorous testing this is going to need to have in order to make it function better. So I would, I guess I would ask that question and, and see if you find a satisfactory... So I would, I guess I would ask that question and, and see if you find a satisfactory answer in that. So those were sort of my general topics without getting in the weeds. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Clerk Geiser, is there anyone else addition, additional that would like to speak?
Chair, I don't see that anyone else is wishing to comment at this time.
Okay. And I will also note that there is still no one in council chambers. And so we will, at this point, move into our council, or committee deliberation, rather, and potentially a committee recommendation on this item. And similar to last time with Title 18 items, we can make a list of things that we feel need to be revisited by PPC, for example, as well as a list of things that we would like to flag for council and things that we would like revised from the current direction that this section of the code is headed. So Council President Walsh, would you like to start us off? Please go ahead.
Sure, sure. So I always like to start with the things I like. And in particular, you know that I've been very focused on, is this usable? Is this readable to the average person? And so I particularly liked how you showed those charts were much more readable than I think our current scenario. I really like the way that the zones and the charts have been categorized into residential and commercial and the different sections because if I'm building a house, I don't want to have to look through all of the other 32, um, potential uses in order to understand that. So I really liked that. I also really like the idea of a subdivision design chapter. I think that when we look around the city, one of the things that is really nice about having some of the larger development agreements that we've had in developing the Highlands and Talis is that everything works together. You get a street grid, you understand what the block sizes are in an area. And so I think it's important that we maintain that street connectivity and the understanding that a subdivision, while it can absolutely work within a neighborhood to take something and short-platted or do a subdivision, um, it needs to also work for the larger city. So I'm really glad that we are approaching those things. Um, let's see, looking through my notes. So I guess my largest comment on this is, I'm actually mostly pleased with the direction that we've gone with these zoning and uses chapters. If I had my druthers, as someone who lives in the Highlands, I absolutely love the idea of small-scale retail and cafes in residential areas. But I can understand wanting a conversation about that. So I'm, I understand that part. But if I'm gonna look back at the goals and outcomes chart, the one that I thought I would see in this section is Goal Six, increase the housing diversity. So I think that goal was pretty clear on the concept of, hey, if a developer wants to come in and build something that is smaller scale housing, right now, we're not letting that happen. And I think one of the ways we're not letting that happen is through this idea of, single-family, only, single-family. So I think there are opportunities to look at different ways that we can use that because that was one of our 13 goals. And if we're not gonna address that through zoning, I would be really curious how we plan to address that. So I think of anything, that would be what I would be interested in potentially taking that back to PPC, because I think that's a pretty big gaping hole in the conversation on zoning. That being said, I like a lot of what I see here. I love that things are consolidated, simplified, easier to read and understand. I've got a few other comments that are more on timeline and kind of how we're approaching the whole thing. So I think I'll wait on those and let you go on these.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I am very much aligned with Council President Walsh. It took me a lot of questions and back and forth, so thank you for answering my roughly 20 questions on this topic. And then ultimately, I landed on the biggest issue. And at that 30,000-foot level, the biggest thing that I think we need to have our Planning Policy Commission look at again is why title, uh, why Goal Six, which is the one about the diversity of housing types, is, wasn't included. And to look at this through that lens, because even if we do have this additional grant to look at this separately, which is great, the changes we're making here affect what we can, what we can expect to see be built in the city. So it, it makes a lot more sense to me to look at it through that lens. And in fact, in our goals and outcomes chart, it refers to one of the parts of the code that would need to be changed to address that goal, and that's one of the chapters or one of the sub-chapters that is consolidated through this effort. So I, I think there's a strong basis in, in our previous deliberations for considering that goal with these chapters. And I would, I would like to have it re-looked at through that lens. So that's my, my biggest comment, and that's the biggest one that I think we need to have the Planning Policy Commission take another look. I have some other clarifications or recommendations. One of the questions that I had was around a conversation that was, had, I believe it was a Planning Policy Commission, about the zoning and uses for the mineral extraction. And I, I would recommend that we eliminate mineral resource, the mineral resource zone. There are no parcels that are zoned mineral resource, so that should be, I think, non-controversial. But also, I think it, that these mineral, mineral res, uh, the uses of that, the mineral resource zone and the extract, mineral extraction and asphalt operation, rather, that those should not be allowed, except for where they are currently allowed, which is this one parcel that is, um, the, the Lakeside Industries operations. So I believe that that is an option for us to consider with this update and to be aligned with what is currently the uses. And I think that would, I think that would be a good change to make. Then on the subdivision, I generally agree that I think having standards with the intent is good. There's currently encouraged and discouraged, and if that's the intent, then I think putting it in the intent rather than have code language that has encouraged and discouraged would be the way to go. As far as the zero lot lines, I think one of the reasons why it would be good to have Planning Policy look at this through that Goal Six lens is because this would potentially allow us to have smaller house, uh, smaller lots be buildable. I think that is worth considering. I think there are parts of, well, we know for a fact that, from surveys, that the community does want to have the option for smaller housing units than what is currently available in the city. And so to align with that and to also align with our stated goals, I also found that this was in the Climate Action Plan. So this is a longstanding issue, and I think allowing more diversity of housing types would be something that would be made possible by allowing that. So again, I think looking at it through that lens would be helpful. Few other little things that I think can be addressed. There are some, um, some things that I think just basically need to be cleaned up. One other thing I wanted to just, uh, address, maybe at a higher level, is there are some, I think, standards such as if you have a zero lot line, you can't have windows on one side of the house. I don't know that, first of all, a developer would look to the subdivision section of code to know whether they could put windows on the side of the house. But additionally, I think that's kind of getting into a, I, I don't think that's, I think that's going too far with the code. If somebody wants to have the cross ventilation with the windows on the side of the house, I don't see why that couldn't be market determined. So, uh, some things like that, I think, could be cleaned up. I don't think they address the goals that we have for this code update, and I think they could be left to the, left to the market. Um, let's see if I had anything else.
Yeah. Actually, I'm gonna ask a question on that. As someone who has a zero lot line house, is there then something in the code that says no windows on areas, or is it just no windows that open?
In the draft?
In the draft.
It, it goes into quite a bit of detail. It says you can have those, like, opaque-type windows, and it's, it's, um, it's for privacy, apparently.
Yeah, that's privacy concern. I mean, that's easy to determine.
Yeah. Because what, one of the things that I absolutely love about the zero lot line houses in the Highlands is how great of a job most of the developers did in making sure that the windows of houses that are within 10 feet of each other don't line up, but everybody still has windows that allow for light to come into the home. So I, I would definitely not want to eliminate windows or have to have them be opaque if there's another way to handle it.
Yeah.
Thank you. So the current draft says, in order to maintain privacy, no windows, doors, air conditioning, or any type of openings in the wall along a zero-lot line structure allowed. And then it says, except for windows that do not allow for visibility into the interior side setback of the adjacent lot. Examples include, um, you know, higher windows and obscured windows. And, and I think Valerie has some things that she might be able to add on what she, you know, what we hear from doing permit reviews. So go at it, Valerie.
So these, um, this code section is carried over from the, I believe, the Essequo Highlands Development Agreement. This is for, you know, very specific circumstances. And I think the diagram below illustrates that. That's as much information I can give to you right now, but it will definitely be looked at in the next draft.
So my, my comment on that is, I think, zero lot line, especially through the lens of allowing houses to be, or allowing, allowing housing units to be built on smaller lots, is potentially something that will help us meet this diversity of housing goal that we have. And I would like to facilitate those, so not put, um, not put too much restrictions on them. And, and, yeah.
Yeah. I think the building code requires that when, if you have a sleeping, if you have a bedroom, you have to have an openable window because of fire concerns and things like that. So you couldn't put your bedroom there. So I think what I hear you is, let's not put more restrictions and let the market decide what that design looks like. So fair enough. We can, easy, easy to change. Yep.
Great. So those were my, those were my main, uh, comments that, on, on the substance. And then I, I also had a few policy, or process, rather, notes. We, we are increasingly getting comments, such as the ones we heard today in public comments and emails. And I've had a number of people reach out to me, call me on the phone, had phone conversations with a number of people, all echoing the same sort of concern and confusion about the scope of this. And so I think having a document that, so the, the goal and outcome, or the goal feedback loop, um, document that we have right now, I think is great. I think having some that are specific to, for example, the Essequo Climate Action Plan, where it says, this was a goal in the Essequo Climate Action Plan. This is the part of Title 18 that, um, that is going to be affected by this, uh, this part of the Climate Action Plan. Just connecting those dots, I think, would be really helpful. I also think raising the visibility on the whiteboard and potentially having that in one place. And as we go through this process, maybe also putting some approximate goals for a timeline on there with council's help could also be useful. Not something that needs to be done, or not something really that can be done right away, but over time, that might also help. Because I think a lot of the concern is that these, these, um, plans are not being turned into, plans and goals and aspirations are not being turned into code with this update and going on a whiteboard and that, 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 you know, the concern is about the follow-through on that whiteboard. So I think adding some more visibility to the whiteboard and the process on the whiteboard would also potentially be help, be helpful. And then lastly, I have heard from a number of community members about the importance of testing the code. You said that as well. But having a, a few test code days or workshops, that would be helpful. And I think having those examples worked through for council at the end of this process would also be very helpful. So those are my, a few, a few recommendations on the process side of things.
I will echo a few of those which were on my list. So with testing the code against sample projects, absolutely love that at the end, but I want to start seeing that coming through with each of these sections. Either coming through to PPC or coming through to this committee. I, I think it's very difficult to feel like we can be certain we're making progress and say, yes, we're moving in the right direction if we're not able to see what the results are of that. And so I would like the administration to at least respond and let us know when that is planned. And my preference would be either at PPC or at the committee as we're going through these different sections, so that we can test different elements and not just the project as a whole. I also wanted to comment on the whiteboard idea. You know, I've asked, can we get a version of that and how that stands now? I remember there was an earlier conversation and there was some sort of agreement or thumbs-up or something from council that said, hey, this is within the scope of the project and this is not. So I'd also like to see that earlier document or whatever that decision was, because I think the, what's on the whiteboard list now, I want to be able to compare to that, and I want to be able to see how that has grown. Because I think there's certainly a sense.
Which document are you referring to?
I think I know. So we had a, the, the meeting in which we approved, as a council, the, um, the goals and outcomes chart. There was also a discussion, for example, I remember, we talked about affordable housing and, and what we would need to have more affordable housing, and that was something that we considered to be on the, on the whiteboard. So there, in that meeting, which I can find the date, because I was looking at it earlier, we had, council began to put stuff on the whiteboard, basically. And so since then, commissions and the public and everybody else that has been following along this process has also made suggestions that have made it to the whiteboard. So we could compare against that as the starting point and what's happened over time.
Yeah. I could not find it myself, and I don't know if a name was given to it. I know when we were initially talking about it, it was something about workshop, um, section. And so I don't know.
It was probably before my time, but if it's part of the agenda packet, then, then...
No, yeah. Yeah. It was at the end of kind of the ad-hoc's time, as we were bringing things back to council, and we did the goals and outcome chart to agree upon, hey, this is the scope, this is what we're going forward. So I would like to see both of those, and I'd like to find a way that we can also make that, that and the goals and outcomes chart accessible to the community. Because I have to say, the number of times I've had to search through my emails or through previous meetings to find the goals and outcomes chart has been so many. or through previous meetings to find the Goals and Outcomes Chart has been so many.
Sure, yeah. No, we'll, we'll put it on the, on the webpage if it isn't already up today. And, and then this, this whiteboard thing is going to evolve, right? We're not done with all the, all the, all the topics yet. So we, we had planned on having a consolidated list and having that discussion with Planning and Policy Commission, getting the public to comment on it during that and then bring it to council and have a prioritization. You know, here's the things, are we missing anything? Because we don't want to lose a few things that come up during these conversations. Some are really great ideas that'll help the community in the long run. So we're capturing those, but then we're also capturing these that require code changes. And then council can tell us, yes, prioritize these five in the next year. You know, however, you all tell us to prioritize them. So we were planning to do that. If we start having discussion about the whiteboard at every meeting, we're not going to get, you know, we also want to make sure we, we are focused on the topics that are, we, we want to discuss. So that's just my only hesitance of having a discussion about whiteboard at every meeting maybe a little too much.
And, committee members, I didn't hear that you're looking to discuss at every meeting. I think you just want it as a reference. So we can take it, have it, we can put a date as of whatever particular date. And so it will serve as a reference document.
Yeah, I, I think we've done a fantastic job on transparency and tracking of comments. This has just become the one area that feels like it's a little bit of a black hole. And so making sure that surfaced to the community so that they see, not only did we note down on the feedback section that that's going to go on the whiteboard, but that we can see the whiteboard and understand how it's progressing. So that, and then I talked about the testing the code. We had some questions come up about how much has moved into this concept of, "That's going to be included in the second draft, that's going to be included in the final draft." And while I appreciate seeing the notes of all of that, that does make me start thinking about what the review is going to be like and whether there's going to be substantial time. So I'd like to release, or, you know, talk about when that final draft is going to come through and what the feedback loop and timeline is going to be for community, commission, committee, and council review at that point. Can you go over that?
Yeah, so right now, we have the, the sixth topic going to Planning and Policy Commission in August. So we would actually get the first, you know, the public hearing on the first round completed by August. Then we have, you know, because we have a comprehensive plan amendment, the, the annual amendments that need to be done by the end of the year, we're considering, you know, having PPC focus on those in September. So you, you have time, October, November, December, to act on those because there are two big ones. So with that, in order to accommodate that, we're thinking we will have the hearing for Title 18 in front of PPC on the consolidated draft in October. So, and then we would bring it back to you in November. Now, we can always accommodate more time if that's needed. What, what would you, what are your thoughts? And spending more time with PPC with the final draft in the community before coming to council? Or start the process with you and then have some additional time?
I don't know if I have a strong opinion, more just that I want enough time on that. Do you have a sense?
I agree. I mean, we need enough time, but I think the other, hopefully, helpful aspect of this could be the, the check-ins when we hear back about changes that have been made in these meetings as the changes go through that process. So that, that was part of the reason why, in planning for this meeting, which is our first follow-up meeting to a prior Title 18 committee agenda item that we, we have that touch. So I, I think, I think that should help. That was my hope, anyway.
So I think I had one more kind of item on my list, which is I'm starting to feel a little bit uncomfortable with the use of the Goals and Outcomes Chart as a way to put up guardrails on what can and can't be done. Now, that being said, I've already expressed my interest in seeing what the whiteboard list is now and what it was originally. And so I'm willing to take a look at that and understand what we had, I think, really truly put in policy of, "That's going to wait." But it's starting to feel like a very repetitious thing to say to the community, "Nope, that's not okay, that's not okay." And so maybe the transparency of seeing that it will be addressed at a future time and that we have a timeline will help with that feeling. But it really, my thought process when ad hoc was creating the Goals and Outcomes Chart was to suggest some things that we could do as actions and outcomes that we desired as a way to evaluate the code at the end, not as a way to put up guardrails on what we shouldn't do. And so I guess I'm just expressing that I'm feeling a little bit of hesitation in how that is being used to kind of stunt some conversations. But I also see interest in talking about the whiteboard and maybe that will clarify things for me.
Sure, yeah, I, I think there's a fair.
Benny, let me, let me take a tat, a crack at this. And I think we need to take a step back. This is a huge project. This is almost the entire growth of this city over the last 25-plus years. We're having to say, "Time out, we're going to put it all together so it makes sense as we move forward." It's a huge, huge project. It's been years in the making. You know, I think the idea of guardrails is to help keep a focus on that this is a huge project. Does that mean that there's nothing else that, that, that can be put into it at any point? No, it is meant to be guardrails. It is not cement, concrete, bricks, walls around it. It is guardrails. At your last committee meeting, I know that the, the council chair, Hunt, you know, raised some issues regarding, and help me, Benny, the, the natural, the boundary of, what's the term of art I'm looking for?
The buffer?
The buffer zones. And, you know, I think the message we got from Chair Hunt was, "The buffer zone may be something that's outside the guardrail, but I want to see what it's going to cost for us to deal with it." So I think we're going to have those projects, those initiatives, that this committee, the council's going to say, "Yes, it may be outside of the guardrails, but it's still really important and we want to deal with that." Now, functionally, is that looking at the whiteboard list and having a subset or having a highlighter highlight through that? I mean, we could spend the rest of the evening sorting through the detail of that. But as the city council starts, I can't believe, but next month, looking at the 23-24 budget, I think it's appropriate to have that whiteboard list handy. Because you have already identified one project, there's probably other projects, and we will then call that list something else. But, you know, from the administration's perspective, I think it's important for the council, this committee, and the larger community to stop every once in a while and say, "This is an enormous, enormous project. It's impossible for us to do it all right in one step. It is absolutely impossible." And so what we have to do instead is have some policies and procedures that allow us to get something done. And I think that's been Mayor Polly's frustration. I think it's been members of this committee and the city council's frustration. Is not, let's not get overwhelmed by just the sheer magnitude of what we have, but let's put things in place. Let's have these goals, let's have guardrails in order to help focus on it. And I think it's a false narrative for members of the community to come and say, "Well, you're missing this, you're missing this, you're missing this." Well, of course, it's a huge code, but we have policies in place and procedures in place. I mean, this committee stewardship has been excellent. Again, as we look at the budget for 23-24, there'll be additional projects put in. So that the day this is all finished will be the first day to start working on some of these other projects.
Thank you for, for the additional comments on that. And I, I have a different perspective on this. I think I was 100% with, with you, Council President, until this topic. On this one, I think that we, I recall, we considered different ways to do this code update. And there was a sort of code update light that was considered at some point where it really would be limited to consolidation and to technical updates, things that needed to be done to comply with various law. And then we have, I think, now struck a balance intentionally on substantive issues that are longstanding issues that we do want to address that require some policy decisions, addressing them in this code update and, as well as the consolidation that needed to happen to make the code much more usable and, and useful for the community and for developers as well as for the staff. So I think, I think we intentionally struck that balance. It's not only consolidation, it's also not everything that we know we will ever need to do. Code is also a living document. We will continue to adopt ordinances and that will require updates. And that's part of the, the ongoing work that we do. So I, I, I see it as a useful document. And the other thing, just in revisiting the Goals and Outcomes Chart, if we achieved everything in that Goals and Outcomes Chart, I think we would really be in a much better state as far as being able to use the code and have it meet the aspirations of the community. But I, you know, I think we would be, really have something to be proud of and I think it would meet a lot of the expectations of the community. So there is a lot of room to do policy updates that do align with the community's concerns on a number of really important issues. And that is all doable within the Goals and Outcome Chart. So I, and I, and actually, I think in our earlier comment from, from Steve, who has been following this process closely, he, he made a similar comment about there, there is a lot of, there is a lot in that Goal and Outcome Chart. Even if we stick to that and don't go outside of that, I think we, we will be well-served. So that's my thoughts on the Goals and Outcome Chart. Do you have what you need from this committee? I think we, we basically, in summary, we, we would like Planning Policy to look at this through the Goal Six lens. And that probably affects the subdivision as well as the duplex, et cetera, housing types conversation. I think it could potentially, the subdivision design, including the zero lot line components, those, those are all important. And potentially, staff may also consider other things that might, we might want to revisit through that lens.
Sure. No, that's, that's helpful. I think everything's great in terms of your feedback. So we'll, we'll go back on the housing types. You know, we'll brief you on the $100,000 that we got from, from Department of Commerce. We have a consultant on board and the three priority, you know, things that they're going to look at are condos, what are the impediments to condos? So that's improving housing diversity. And if you really care about homeownership, why, you know, what's making us not build those or get those in our community? And then housing diversity is one of the, the housing strategies. So a lot of work will occur with that grant because we really need to understand the underlying, you know, it's not only just a code issue, it's also what are the economics to make that really happen? So that's where we want to, you know, spend the time understanding the, the economics of, of improving housing diversity, what will work and what won't work, and how to do it effectively in code. So there's a little bit of chicken and the egg thing going on with those things. But the timeline for that grant is June of next year. So it isn't, you know, "We'll do this in two years" kind of thing. So it's going to happen. We have the money from the Department of Commerce. They'll be working on it. There'll be robust outreach with, you know, the development community, with the community members and PPC. So we'll, we'll come up with a work plan associated with that grant and then share it with you all in terms of the timing and see if that helps answer some of your concerns about how we're going to fold it or with this Title 18 update as our first step. Because I think that work will definitely inform the code-writing aspects for housing diversity. But if you want an interim and then work on that, we can certainly do that. But whatever that small fix needs to be now and then we can come back and after we learn more through that work, retouch the code again, perhaps.
So from my perspective and the way the materials were framed, for example, to Planning Policy, the goals that were being considered were the two goals. One was the, one was the goal about best practices and code update, and then also the neighborhood character goal. And so my ask is that they be looked at with this other goal, which, which does refer to this chapter. Because I do think, separate from the very important work having to do with condo liability and condo law and a number of other things that are also important to this, which would be addressed separately by that grant, just looking at it through that lens is important. Because as, as I mentioned earlier, this does determine where you can build certain kinds of housing. And so I think, considering it that, considering it with that goal in mind, you might come to a different outcome, for example, on the zero lot lines. And then, you know, like, when I asked this question about the zero lot line and the, getting the pros and cons, for me, that was very helpful. If you look at that pros and cons for the zero lot line and the 250-foot block size, and then you look at that list of pros and cons with this additional goal of increasing housing diversity, you might come to something different than only through the goal of the neighborhood character. And I certainly came to that conclusion. So I, I think it would be useful to have that goal as a lens and, and have it re-looked at.
Absolutely. I mean, we can certainly put that lens in, in our next touch point with PPC on, on having that part of that, their framework to analyze, whether it meets or not, and having a discussion about housing diversity. But with the grant, there are three different strategies. And one of them, Strategy Eight, that council had adopted as part of the Housing Action Plan, is incorporate code provisions to increase the potential diversity of housing types built in the city. So it clearly is exactly what this Goal and Outcomes Chart is talking about as the adopted policy. And so, anyway, but, but I, I hear you in terms of having that lens to evaluate, you can come to a different conclusion, that, that makes perfect sense.
And I think, and having read the, the materials that you sent about that grant, they, there could be other parts of this code, not in the zoning and uses, but somewhere else in the code, very likely that are affected. And, and so the, just, there's, there is a Venn diagram where there's an overlap. But I think, for me, I just want that goal, that, my ask is that the lens be applied to this by our volunteer commissions. Because I think it, in my mind, it's, it's a goal that was already set by council and is, and one of our important, important to the community. It's in the Isaguat Climate Action Plan as well to have diversity of housing types. So it's, it's got policy backing and should be considered with the other goals.
Sure. Great.
And then we have a number of other things we can bring back to council, but I think that was the main one for the Planning Policy Commission. Okay. Do you need anything else from this committee this evening, as far as feedback? You got it? Okay, great. Well, thank you again. And I think we are concluded with that item. So we will move to our second item, second item of the evening. And that will be ID 1144, Amendments to Title 16, Stormwater Manual and Floodplain Code. And this will be presented by Evan Brumfield, Environmental and Regulatory Program Administrator. So Evan, take it away. I don't think, he said he can't hear. Oh. Can you, okay. We have technical difficulties, I think.
Here we go. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. All right. Figured it out. All right, and you can see my slideshow?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, good evening, and then, thanks for having me back to talk about our flood plane code and stormwater code update. My name is Evan Brumfield. I'm the Environmental and Regulatory Program Administrator here for the city. And I'm coming back here to council tonight to present on the proposed draft codes, meet our mandatory requirements, and to go over areas that we've identified, go above and beyond these mandatory requirements to accommodate for climate change. Sorry, excuse me. So these code updates are to maintain compliance with our CRS and MDS permit. So, any rating systems or CRS is a voluntary incentive program that recognizes and encourages community flood plane management and practices that exceed the minimum requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program, or the NFIP. The city currently holds a Class Five rating out of 10, amongst the highest in King County, and in the CRS program, which gives our businesses and residents 25% flood insurance rate discount. The MDS, or the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, is a federal requirement under the Clean Water Act that regulates and reduces stormwater and wastewater discharges from the city's stormwater system to the maximum extent practicable, protect water quality and waters of the state. Updates that we'll be going through will, we'll be updating IMC 1636 for the areas of special flood hazard, and that's for our CRS program compliance, as well as IMC 16 and 13 for our stormwater sections. And the figure for that is, is the MDS permit. So, this, the MDS permit requires Isqwa to update our Stormwater Design Manual. And in Isqwa, our Stormwater Design Manual is made up of two separate documents, one being Ecology's Stormwater Management Manual of Western Washington, which we also refer to as the Ecology Manual, and the second being our Stormwater Design Manual Addendum. So, what this addendum does is it allows us, Isqwa, to be more locally prescriptive in the Ecology Manual to, to fit our community better. But we've also identified areas where we can go above and beyond these mandatory updates. So, a direction that we're looking for tonight here is, should the administration remove the exemption from the Stormwater Design Manual, not requiring enhanced treatment of employee-only parking lots at commercial and industrial project sites? And two, should the proposed code amendments be forwarded for adoption by council? But just to give a background of kind of how we got here, we had our kickoff meeting in October, where staff met with consultants to identify areas, mandatory updates, as well as what areas that we can go above and beyond these mandatory updates to accommodate for climate change. We then came to a joint Environmental Board Planning Policy Committee meeting on March 9th to present on these areas that we could go above and beyond, to accommodate for climate change, including future flood plane, future flood plane protections, and critical drainage review. We then presented these options based on feedback we received from the joint meeting, to a council study session on April 12th. After that study session, we sent out a draft, draft codes for internal review based on recommendations received from council and a joint meeting with the Environmental Board and PPC. On May 12th, we presented to the Environmental Board about the Stormwater Design Manual updates. And based on all that feedback we received, tonight, we're here presenting the final proposed draft code with the Stormwater Design Manual updates. After tonight, we're hoping for a determinative, determination of non-significance, or DNS, on our SEPA, and we'll have a 30-day public window open for public comment, with hopeful council adoption by August 1st. So, first up, the flood plane code updates. So, updates to Title 1636, areas of special flood hazard are, we're going to be doing two different areas, one for the CRS Class Eight freeboard requirement, and two for the future flood plane protections. And so, in the following slides, we'll go over each of these updates. First, I want to talk about just in general flood planes in Isqwa. So, Isqwa is unique to our neighbors, in that we have an active flood plane that is dissecting our city. Not only is this active flood plane dissecting Isqwa, but we also have urban core and residential within our flood plane as well. Every year, County Flood Control District mails out a Be Flood Ready Flood Preparedness brochure, helping residents prepare for floods. The Flood Control District highlights seven rivers and creeks where flooding is expected frequently. Seven water bodies are Skikomish River, the Tolt River, Stokomi River, Cedar River, Green River, White River, Isqwa Creek. So, Isqwa, more so than our neighbors, given our flood plane's location, has to be thoughtful in our planning for future flooding to mitigate for future impacts. And as you can see in this map here, have these kind of light blue green areas are, are areas of flood plain. So, 500 is, or sorry, the green is more of our 500-year, and the light blue is our 100-year flood plain. So, the 100-year flood plain is where all our flood plane requirements are required. The CRS, the CRS Class Eight preboard, the requirement states that the community must adopt and enforce at least a one-foot freeboard requirement, including machinery and equipment, for all residential buildings triggered by our flood ordinance, where base flood elevations have been determined by FEMA. So, the city has updated our code to meet the standard by, one, adding in a definition for equipment, and, two, updating IMC 1636-130 specific standards to include appropriate clarifying language. So, this picture right here, as you can see, this is, talking about freeboard, sorry. As you can see in the picture on the slide, the freeboard, or which is the height above the flood plain, or the base flood elevation, which is BFE right here, would be the area between the BFE and the top of the foundation. So, when we talk about freeboard, we're talking about the base flood elevation level, and then the area to the top of the foundation. This is something that Isqwa has already been requiring. However, our code did not clearly state that, that we were implementing this requirement. So, with these two options, we will now clearly state this requirement, and get back in compliance with our CRS and FEMA. If failure to update this code would cause Isqwa to immediately fall back to a CRS Class Nine, which would drop all our residents and businesses down to only a 5% flood insurance rate discount. So, future flood plane, flood plane protection. Flood plane protection has been implemented by the city, and directed by FEMA through Ecology to establish minimum standards, within the 100-year flood plain for the community to participate in the flood insurance program. These minimum standards have shortcomings that are worth considering when applied in Isqwa, specifically when accommodating for climate change, the future peak flows in Isqwa's creeks and streams. Analysis done by UW and Fish and Wildlife has found a general relationship between future peak flows and Isqwa stream systems, the difference between the 100 and 500-year flood stage. Increasing the flood protection standard to the 500-year flood stage, or BFE or Base Flood Elevation Plus Two, will address the projected future 100-year flows within the existing 100-year flood plane. This graphic is what the administration is proposing for certain facilities within the 500 flood level, sorry, when the 500-year flood level is known by FEMA. So, each of these icons represents a development type, like we can see here, residential, roads, travel, commercial. And right now, the gray bar in the middle represents our current flood protection level of BFE Plus One. What we are proposing is for the facilities and activities that are listed in the top blue bar, be elevated to the BFE Plus Two level, reduce potential impacts from the future high flows. Two feet can be broken down into one foot for climate change, and the other foot for the, the freeboard requirement by CRS and NFIP. Green bar, down below at the bottom, are areas that tend to be more resilient flooding, but also are not areas that necessarily trigger our flood ordinance as well. Well, this graphic is what the administration is proposing for facilities when the 500 flood level is not known by FEMA. So, what does this mean when a, when a flood level is not known? It just means that there is, there's less certainty about what a base flood elevation is, and maybe a little more protection or uncertainty should be considered. So, again, each of these icons represents a development type, and the middle bar represents what our current flood protection standards are at base flood elevation Plus One. The top bar is what we are recommending, increasing our flood standard to base flood elevation Plus Two, for the same rationale as the previous slide. The bottom bar, again, is the areas that are determined to be more resilient, and are not called out in our flood ordinance for protection levels. Another thing to note is these green icons in the areas, these kind of facilities right here, in Zone AO, these represent flood depths. So, these are areas where we don't know the base flood elevation. They're more, they're in areas where we know the flood depth. So, an example for this would be back, the Atlas Condos, back when that used to turn into a bathtub. That was a flood depth kind of thing. So, we knew, you know, one to three feet, that that would flood every year, and so our flood protection standard would be based on that depth, not the flood elevation. And so, what the, the facilities here need to elevate to feet above that flood depth, or three feet above the highest ground surface, whichever is greater. One comment that has come in with regards to the increased flood standard to accommodate for climate change is how ADA might be impacted, specifically in commercial, since single-family residential typically doesn't require ADA. One solution to ADA implementation in commercial is in our current code and our proposed code. Commercial is not required to elevate their building in order to come in compliance with the flood ordinance. Non-residential projects have the option to dry flood-proof their project, alleviating any potential ADA implementation. Dry flood-proofing allows a building to be built, or stay at ground level, while flood-proofing the foundation and exterior, exterior of the building up to the flood standard. Another thing to note is the administration reached out to King County Flood Plane Permitting Staff, and the State Flood Plane Coordinator at the Department of Ecology, to see if ADA implementation, specifically with a base flood elevation Plus Two flood protection standard, has been an issue for implementation. Both stated that they have not heard of, or had any difficulties implementing ADA within the flood plane. Lastly, our current code, proposed revised code, also requires new critical facilities to be elevated, base flood elevation Plus Three. The critical facilities inside, sorry, include but are not limited to schools, nursing homes, hospitals, police, fire, and emergency response installations. This is a basic mandatory NFIP requirement that all participating jurisdictions implement. Participation in the NFIP ensures our residents and businesses be eligible for federal flood insurance and flood mitigation grants. And lastly, increasing our flood protection standard would also reduce the risk of someone with a physical disability needing to evacuate their home during a major flood. On to stormwater. So, updates to Title 1626 and 1328 include four different items, one being the adoption of the 2019 Department of Ecology Stormwater Management Manual of Western Washington, also called the Ecology Manual. Number two, the 2022 Stormwater Design Manual Addendum adoption. And those are, that is to include the offsite analysis, which we formally refer to that as the Critical Drainage Review. And number four, a brand-new program of the South Source Control Program for Existing Development. So, the following slides will go over each of these kind of areas. The city will update from the 2014 Ecology Manual to the most current 2019 Ecology Manual. Ecology Manual provides guidance on the measures necessary to control the quantity and quality of stormwater. Isqwa uses this manual to set stormwater requirements for new development and redevelopment projects. Land developers and development engineers use this manual to design permanent stormwater control plans, create construction stormwater pollution prevention plans, and determine stormwater infrastructure. Businesses use this manual to help design their stormwater pollution prevention plans. This manual update will continue to help Isqwa comply with our permits, and the 2019 Ecology Manual changes include increased alignment with permitting and performance standards, clarifications, and inclusion of additional source control BMPs, or best management practices, additional modeling requirements, and other considerations. The 2022 addendum, as I stated before, this addendum allows us to be more locally prescriptive of the 2019 Ecology Manual to fit Isqwa better. While most of Ecology's 2019 manual is applicable to the city of Isqwa, several significant differences are contained in the 2022 Stormwater Design Manual Addendum, through other city requirements for development permitting, including, number one, the Central Isqwa Area Alternative Flow Control Standard. So, this flow control standard modifies the flow control standard in the Valley Floor area of downtown Isqwa. In these sub-basins, the pre-development condition can be assumed to be the existing site conditions, instead of forested. Number two, the Central Isqwa Area Seasonably Saturated Soil Assumption. City in 2011 conducted a technical analysis, in coordination with the Department of Ecology, into the pre-development hydrology of this area, and specifically where seasonably saturated soil conditions can be documented near the surface. And number three, the turbidity standard for Isqwa's 100 NTUs, and this is the discharge notification level for all projects in the city at all times, up to the 10-year storm. Larger projects that require their own construction stormwater permit through Ecology have a discharge notification level of 250 NTUs. And NTUs is, is a measurement of how cloudy a water is. So, like, a zero NTU water would look, you know, it's not even drinking water. Drinking water is, is a higher NTU than, than zero. So, just explain what NTUs are. Isqwa has decided, as in previous updates, be more proactive and restrictive on stormwater discharging from a construction site, and these larger projects are required to meet our more restrictive discharge standard. Number four, our community planning and development conducts our stormwater review. Number five, we have the inclusion of the optional offsite analysis, which we, again, formally presented to you as a Critical Drainage Review. This will be an assessment of the consequences and risks of the stormwater system failure on a project site. And, and adoption of 2021 King County Surface Water Design Manual sections, specifically Chapter Four, which is Conveyance System Analysis and Design, and in Chapter 3.2, figures 3.2.1 A through D, which are the isopluveal maps. And what, what those isopluveal maps do is they give us our precipitation levels for a 24-hour storm. So, that, that can guide us, and, and let us know our, what, what a two-year storm is, what a 10-year storm is, what a 24, 25-year storm is, what a 100-year storm is, those kind of things. So, in this addendum, we're also want to bring to your, to you for direction, is needed for runoff treatment. So, enhanced treatment is not required with parking lots dedicated solely to parking lots of employees' private vehicles at commercial and industrial sites. Again, this is in our addendum and the Ecology Manual. So, let's talk about treatment, specifically enhanced treatment versus basic treatment. These are, these are the two types of treatments in, in the stormwater world. So, as of right now, these employee-only parking lots only need to implement basic treatment. In general, basic treatment treats for total suspended solids, or basically large bulky items that are found in stormwater. This could be large sediment, litter, large leaves, different stuff like that. That's what the, a basic treatment is treating for. So, enhanced treatment is basic treatment, so it takes into account all those total suspended solids. Plus, it treats for dissolved metal, metals, specifically copper and zinc, which we know that copper negatively impacts juvenile salmon. So, copper sources include vehicle brakes, and zinc sources include So copper sources include vehicle brakes, and zinc sources include tire dust and motor oils. We brought this issue to the May 11th Environmental Board meeting, and the board approved of the city treating all parking lots the same and removing this exemption from our addendum and manual. Something to note as well is that King County Manual does not allow for this exemption either. Another new area of the addendum is our offsite analysis. Like I stated before, this was formerly our Critical Drainage Review that we presented to you. And the Critical Drainage Review's purpose was to evaluate the potential negative consequences of a drainage system failure from any cause. And what we realized through this Stormwater Design Manual update process was even though there was a need for Critical Drainage Review, the process, there wasn't a need for another term for us all to get to know. So we dug into the Ecology Manual, and we found the optional offsite analysis to meet our needs. This offsite analysis will require all development and redevelopment projects requiring review under the Ecology Manual or addendum to prepare an offsite analysis report, generally following the guidance in Issaquah Stormwater Design Manual, which our manual is two different documents like we talked about. It's our Ecology Manual and our addendum. So the offsite analysis will be a review, an assessment of current and future conveyance capacity, upland erosion impacts, stream channel erosion at the outfall location, localized site flooding potential, unknown violations of standards of surface water quality, groundwater wellhead protection areas, and the potential impacts to a project of a drainage system failure. So a new requirement coming to Issaquah via the MPDS permit is our Source Control Program. But good news is that Issaquah has a long history of successful source control programs aimed at reducing and eliminating non-stormwater discharges into our city-owned stormwater system and waters of the state. The existing source control program the city currently implements has been above and beyond the MPDS permit requirements. All jurisdictions covered by the MPDS permit will now be required to create and implement a source control program. The city will be shifting our existing source control program into a new source control MPDS program. The source control inspections will be inspecting existing business sites for pollution and potential pollution sources. The city will then work with these businesses to eliminate the pollution source through operational best management practices and, if necessary, structural and treatment best management practices if necessary. So an example of an operational best management practice would be a vectoring of a catch basin if the sediment is too high, or there's a contaminant in there, or something along those lines. It could also be parking lot sweeping, sweeping of a parking lot. So one, this picture here on the left is an example of something that we would be looking for. This is in a dumpster enclosure, obviously not up to Issaquah standards or MPDS standards. And so we would work with this business to, number one, eliminate and clean up the contaminants, but then also work with them on solutions to make sure that this doesn't keep happening. So in review, our proposal here tonight is to recommend the adoption of these items here. So our CRS Class 8 freeboard requirements, which is mandated by our CRS program, which is to make sure that we have freeboard requirements for our equipment in our flood plane. We also have our future flood plane protections, which include our base flood elevation increase from BFE plus one to BFE plus two, and that's only for those certain areas that we identified on that top blue bar. Another thing to note too is that these elevation requirements, you know, they're not something that would immediately require everyone to elevate in the flood plane. This is something that would be brought up through our normal permitting process. Also adoption of the 2019 Department of Ecology Stormwater Management Manual, in addition to the 2022 Stormwater Design Manual Addendum, which includes our offsite analysis and the Source Control Program for Existing Development. The options that we've, that administration has brought to you are kind of two little chunks of options, one being in the enhanced treatment exemption. So number one, should we keep the exemption from the Stormwater Design Manual not requiring enhanced treatment of employee-only parking lots at commercial and industrial project sites? And at these sites, as it is now, only basic treatment will continue to occur at these sites? Or number two, should we remove this exemption from the Stormwater Design Manual not requiring enhanced treatment of employee-only parking lots at commercial industrial sites? And so what this would do is require enhanced treatment to occur at these project sites. Again, this would be if triggered. So the other chunk is our overall options. So one, do not recommend city council adoption of these proposed code amendments. Two, recommend adoption of the proposed code amendments by city council. Or three, propose amendments to the code and bring back to the committee. Note that this delay would cause the city to maintain a non-compliance with our regulatory So administration recommends the removal of the exemption for the Stormwater Design Manual not requiring enhanced treatment of employee-only parking lots at commercial and industrial sites, and recommends adoption of the proposed code amendments by the city So to get back to this slide, you know, timing the next steps. So after this, like we talked about, after this June 7th meeting, we are awaiting our determination of nonsignificance for SEPA, which will then be opened up to a 30-day public window for comment and hopeful council adoption by August 1st. And that's it.
Great, thank you, Evan. We can now have council or committee comment, questions. Do you have any questions on this one? Okay, go ahead. Okay, well, thank you. I'll go into all of my praise in the comments section and everything, but just questions. The, it said arterial roads would be proposed at BFE plus two. Is that correct?
Let's see, so that would be...
Way back up when we were in...
Yeah, sorry.
Yep.
Okay. That would be major arterials, so not minor arterials. So the, and the purpose of that would be for like evacuation, like if we need to evacuate in a flood, we want to be able to have a road to drive out on, so.
Okay, well, then let me connect all of these dots. So of the things on this list that would be something that the city would be responsible for upgrading, can you or city administrator Bob Kowitz or someone speak to major arterial roads or fire stations, police stations, and emergency management facilities, whether they are in flood planes? And if so, if they're already at BFE plus two, or if this would require us to make updates? Should we be at that point of going through a permit process?
Sure. I can start out by saying that we don't have any hospitals, fire, police, or, you know, anything like that in the flood plane. The arterials would be, would be a different option or a different thing to consider. We have not looked at what major arterials these would be, and we have not really defined that yet in this process. So it would be more on, that would be something that we would have a work item on to determine what these major arterials are, that we would determine most likely with our emergency management, our emergency manager, and then have those identified for our permitting staff so they know when a project comes in.
Would it be possible to have that information before this comes back to council? Just understanding what those major arterials are that would be implicated?
Certainly.
Okay, fantastic. And then my other question, the last time the committee approached this idea of flood planes and protection, we had some questions regarding septic tanks. And so I know we received an email about that. Could you talk to what the city's planned approach is to septic tanks so that anybody who didn't receive those emails could hear that?
Yes, and I see Gary turns camera on. So Gary, take it away.
Let me just fix my video here, one second. Thank you, sorry about that. Thank you for the question. Yes, we worked internally after our last meeting on septics and realized the best place to address that was our sewer master plan, which you've seen some previous discussion on, but we'll be coming back in full force in third quarter. So what we, what we are committed to bringing back to you with the sewer master plan are a few things with septic. So first is what was asked for is identification of all the existing locations of septic systems in flood planes. So we're gonna, we're gonna identify that, and we're also gonna show, present what it would take at a high level to sewer those areas. The first one off the block we're already working on is the Sycamore neighborhood, just to have high-level costs so everybody can see clearly where they are and what those would be. What we're also working on, this is one of Evan's pieces, is inspection programs and requirements for going forward for areas, anywhere outside of the flood plane, what those should be, how it should be monitored, how it should be inspected, and how it should be reported on. And then the final thing we're looking at is, again, going forward, is if there are areas that, that we still would like to have the ability to have septic systems in, what are those areas and what would be the criteria? For examples, areas that are greater than 200 feet from an existing system but outside the flood plain or critical areas. So those are the flavor of what we're gonna be coming back to you. Matt Alice, as you, as you know, is leading that effort. And to be honest, this is gonna be one of the central tenants of that sewer master plan in terms of policy. So again, that's, that's probably the best place to have it, and there'll be some other topics related to septics in the sewer master plan, so we're hoping to package that all together. And then any, any changes to these code sections that will be required, we'll come back and do that, of course, through that master planning process. Thank you.
Fantastic. That feels like an answer. It feels like we're going somewhere with that, and I appreciate that we've been heard and all of that. So thank you, Gary. That was the end of my set of questions.
Great, thank you. I had one hopefully really quick question. I don't think there's any way, I was gonna ask about the non-compliance and the timeline, but I don't think there's any way we can not be, I don't think there's any way we can be compliant with the timeline because of that 30 days SEPA comment period. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, that was my only question. And at this time, we will call for public comments on this item. So I'll check in with Clerk Geezer if there's anyone on the line that has indicated a desire to speak on this item.
So far, I see one hand raised. That's Connie Marsh. Connie, I will make you a panelist now.
All right, Connie Marsh again, because I love me some stormwater. My understanding is that stormwater code is not something that you vest to. Yet in the prior conversation, I heard people talking about vesting to stormwater codes. So that would be good to be clear. Atlas did not require pedestrians to be able to have egress in a flood situation. So I wanna understand if we are changing code somewhere that will require the ability for people to get out of their homes in a flood situation, because it didn't happen last time. I would like to see that improvement. It may not be the stormwater code, but seeing as how you brought up ADA, it's sort of the same situation. So I didn't know the answer. As a segue, Gilman in this general area has flooded in the past and closed down traffic, and I believe is a major arterial. However, there are alternative pathways if it does flood. It seems to me that if you have a reasonably easy way to divert traffic out of the flooding, that you do not necessarily have to raise the roadway. I don't know the language well enough to understand whether what you have written allows for that flexibility in the, you know, once every few years where a road might flood for a half a day. It doesn't seem like you should have to go to the expense of raising that roadway two feet if you have an elegant alternative. I heard you use the term water sealing, and so I'm imagining yet again, Atlas, that has said, "We have created a bathtub that will not leak." In the last flood, that bathtub leaked into their garage. So people who live in Atlas tell me. So I want to understand what this water sealing proof is initially and over time, because if it starts to flood and it was built as waterproof, that does not seem like a good solution. Now, in the current addendum, I was a little interested to hear the term "central area" be used that referenced our current addendum. My understanding in rereading the addendum is that it is not what we consider to be our Central Issaquah Plan. It is mainly the areas north of the freeway that are sort of like from 56th and heading toward the lake. And these are areas that tend to be naturally inundated all year long, and it does not include the areas south of the freeway, which are not sort of naturally inundated during the winter as often. And so I think that's true, but what would be nice would be to have a map included so that with one look, you can understand exactly where that addendum is, and then put it on the GIS layer so that city planners can also easily see where this stormwater addendum is in place. Now we're looking at the offsite analysis, and the language is a little bit different, and this has been a main concern of mine, because we have situations where existing systems overflow, and then we are told that, you know what, it's over X-year storm, so there's nothing we can do about it. So I want to be absolutely sure that these existing systems that flood will then have someone looking at them to see if we can address those flooding concerns, because often those NTUs are well over 100, yet there's not a system in place that reports them to the Department of Fish and Wildlife, and then they end up in our streams, and they wash out our eggs, and they harm our salmon habitat. And I want that problem solved, and I was hopeful that this was going to be it. Now we have slightly different language, so I don't know if it means the same thing. And I don't know if your best management practices have now automatically included that fish and wildlife be notified when you have these higher NTU floods that are going into our streams. I would like a yearly dashboard report to see how well we are doing in all of this, because while you say we're doing something, it would be nice to understand what is changing, what's being helped. And so we would basically be being kept up to date. And then this discussion of tire chemicals, as we talk about enhanced treatment, I still don't understand whether this enhanced treatment does accommodate those, you know, new wear-tire things that kill the fish. And so then the last and best is, we had recent flooding on the east fork of Issaquah Creek that was a combination of fish and wildlife, people not removing their logs, creating habitat trees, creating a dam, which caused flooding. And I want to understand how that problem is going to be solved. I don't know that that is a stormwater manual problem, but it does seem like it's, it needs to be better than it was, and I haven't seen y'all come up with a solution. to be better than it was, and I haven't seen y'all come up with a solution, so I shoved it in wherever I could. And that is the end. Thank you. Poor guy, I'm sorry. Can't help it, I love stormwater.
Thank you, Connie. Clerk Geezer, do we have anyone else indicating they would like to speak on this?
No.
Okay. And again, nobody in the council chambers. So with that, we can move into council committee deliberation. Do you like to start off with some comments?
I guess most of my comments are just, my goodness, Evan, how you made what could be a very complex set of topics, not just even an individual topic, but a set of topics, understandable. And so I really wanna compliment you on the presentation and the memo and everything that came with that in order to understand that. I have felt very supported through learning about this process and having questions and getting those questions answered. I feel like this is ready to move forward for adoption. I think the one main question was, should all of the parking lots be treated the same? Gosh darn, yes, they should. So I'm all in favor of the enhanced treatment requirement for the employee lots. And just in general, I think this is so many things right in moving us forward as a city who has some very unique challenges, as you put it, looking at the map as to, we have development in these areas that are going to flood. We have stormwater challenges that we have to address, and I love seeing that happen here and the very specific nature of the recommendations that will help us. So I'm...
Thank you, Council President. I too am in favor, I am in favor of requiring the enhanced treatment for the parking lots, which was the one policy question that was additional for this committee to consider this evening, and agree with all of your comments on the presentation of this information. Also, the ADA was raised by a concerned community member, and so, you know, I think you've done a great job of explaining, of taking that into consideration, getting the information to address that question and bringing that back to us. So I really appreciate it and agree. I think it's very clear. I wanted to follow up on a few of the issues that were raised in Connie's last comments. It seems to me from listening that a number of those were around code compliance as far as some of the issues that were raised. And so I wondered if either Gary or Evan, if you had a perspective on some of those issues that were raised as far as the water dry proofing, I think it was referred to, not actually being waterproof and things like that.
You wanted me to comment on that right now?
If you could, I think that was a new issue, and I would, like I said, so I guess the, I'll brave it as a question, would that fall under code compliance and not under the stormwater manual? The issue, for example, of a dry proof or a waterproof area not being actually waterproof?
Yeah, so I am unfamiliar with what Atlas did if they elevated or flood-proofed. So we would have to look back into those plans to see what happened. But if the, if they did flood-proof and the flood-proofing has failed, that, I don't think that is a, that is not a floodplain code section. That is probably more getting in to with our building inspectors and code enforcement to ensure that the safety is still there. But we can, that would be something that we can definitely look into to see what sort of repercussions we would have with that.
Okay, I think that's, I think that's great. And I think code enforcement makes sense for that to be where that is addressed, but if that information could be brought forward with the additional information, which I think would be very helpful on the arterial roads, that would be excellent information for the council to consider when we consider this for adoption.
Okay, great.
Great. So we can make a formal motion to require the enhanced treatment for all parking lots as well as to recommend the changes as proposed to the full council. So I will go ahead and make that motion and call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we are unanimous and we will bring that information back to council. Do you have what you need from this committee at this time?
I do, yeah, thank you.
We can, at this point, call for any announcements that you might have that you would want to make? Okay. Then there being no further business, I will adjourn the meeting at 9:06. Thank you all, good night.